I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got to fill in these joints. Tara, take the roll, please.
Kim Condon?
Here.
Dennis Tagnan?
Here.
David Hardy?
Here.
Peter Lewis?
Here.
Neil Tomlin?
Here.
Neil Zuckerman? Anthony Moranti?
Here. We have minutes from the August 15th meeting of the planning board. Any adjustments to it? Anybody? Any comments? I'll ask for a motion to adopt.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Correspondence, we did receive a couple of letters, but just recently. So, they won't be read here, but they'll be entered into the record. Okay? And there's going to be a public hearing. We need, if you haven't, please sign up at the sheet in back. Name and address. And let me call on you for the public hearing. Tara? Okay. Yeah, please.
The Phillips Town Planning Board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing. It hasn't been corrected for this meeting, so it still says August. Because it was supposed to happen in August.
Oh.
On Thursday, August 15th, 2019, starting at 7:30 PM at the old VFW Hall, 34 Kemble Avenue in Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. 1122 Route 9D Realty LLC, 1122 Route 9D Garrison. The applicant is seeking amended site plan approval for the construction of a 24 by 32 canopy over the existing fuel pump island. The applicant is also seeking approval for the accessory use of limited used car sales as an adjunct to the gasoline sales and auto repair activities already being conducted on site. The property is approximately .9 acres and is situated in a hamlet mixed-use zoning district in the town of Phillips Town, tax map number 60.18-146. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application plat map and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board at the Phillips Town Town Hall dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 26th day of July, 2019. Anthony Moranti, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. That's the public hearing. Is the applicant's representative here?
Good evening. Bart Lansky for applicant, 1122 Route 9D LLC. Okay. How's that? Okay. Thank you. I apologize for the adjournment of the August date. I had a rare vacation. So, I know this is a public hearing. This has been a gas station since 1960. It's a 1,500 square foot building. I obviously represent applicant, 1122 Route 9D LLC. He's here for a canopy. And the gas station world has changed. Canopies have now become de rigueur. Literally, every station which doesn't have a canopy that I work for is going for approvals for canopies because motorists are no longer interested in getting out of their cars in inclement weather. And they've found to have safety as well as other conveniences. So, the snow and the ice doesn't drop on the ground. You have downlights. And it just works. And that's kind of the state of gas stations today. This station had a canopy approved in 2011. At the time, there was a previous owner. He didn't build the canopy. So, we're back for a canopy approval. We're also here to have, sell three cars incidental to the service station which exists right now. We know that there has been a number of concerns expressed by the neighborhood and the Neighborhood Association. And we think we've done a good job of addressing those concerns. So, this typical canopy is an ACM canopy, a metal canopy with lots of colors and lighting and things like that. This canopy's now been changed and it has a mansard on it. And so, it's a, there was a letter we received. And we, you know, we took some of the cues from there and it's supposed to have a slate gay, gray shingle on it. And then, we took some cues from the area and we're proposing a stone veneer on the front of the building. I brought a sample board of that. We've also taken away the chain link and now proposing some plants behind the cars. Just got to screen that. And we've gone through the process of submitting a long form EAF rather than the short form. And we're here, we'd like to ask the planning board for a couple of minor waivers, excuse me, for the location plan showing properties within 500 feet and for the map of the existing septic system. As this is essentially a canopy, we don't know that, believe that those items are critical. And we'd like to hear what the public has to say and have an opportunity to respond to it. So, thank you.
Okay. Ron, anything you want to address?
Yeah, the board has a technical memorandum from my office. The, for tonight's meeting, the applicant submitted revised plans and a revised long form EAF. Many of the prior issues raised previously have been addressed. Referrals, the required referral to Putnam County Planning went out some months ago and they responded by identifying that the project was approved or submitted. We still have some technical plan issues to be resolved that are noted on the memorandum that I provided. And once the public hearing is closed, there's still a requirement to first make a secret declaration before you move forward with any action on the application itself.
Steve, any comments before we go to the board?
I think Ron summarized nicely.
Okay. Board members, any comments from the board?
I have some questions. Sorry. The mic won't necessarily help. I don't think it. Okay. Good. So, I have a couple of questions. So, we have this new long form EAF and some of these things are just spelling or whatever. But it says the site plan appro, that the name of the action of the project is Site Plan Approval 1122 Route 95 LLC. So, I just would like to make sure that that's clear, that the name is correct. It should say 9D. On page two, C1, it says, "Well, administer of legislative adoption or amendment of a planned local law," et cetera, et cetera. Both yes and no are checked. And then, there's some initials in a circle and I'm not su, I just want to know which, whether it's yes or no.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, page three. Under C3A zoning, it says the zoning classification is B1. We no longer have B1 zoning. I believe this is hamlet mixed use. So, that's it for the EAF in terms of my questions. Now, I'm sorry, page eight. On page eight, it says that the outdoor lighting is going to be 1,500 lumen downlights underneath the canopy. But on your site plan, on the A2 drawing, it says there are 10,871 lumens for six LED lights. So, no matter how you multiply that, those things don't seem to equal each other. So, I'd just kind of like to know what the actual lumens are going to be for each individual light and for the lights together. Also, on that same plan, it says that the light fixture is going to be 15 and 15 sixteenths inches by 15 and 15 sixteenths inches. But then, the sample of what the light is going to be that says Scottsdale Vertex SCV says it's 13.5 inches by 13.5 inches. So, just like to know which that is going to be. And I guess my real concern there is how much light is going to come down from this canopy? You know, even though it's downlit, you know, like, I don't know, Ron, if we have a standard for this kind of light?
The standard relates to light splash at the property line. And the plans do indicate an illumination from those lights that doesn't extend as far as the property line.
Okay. So, we don't, so there is no?
No, based on the information presented on the plans, there's not a concern.
Okay. So, none of these, so it doesn't matter whether it's a 15 and 15 sixteenths or 13.5 or 10,000 or?
They should get it correct. They should make sure all things conform.
Okay.
But based on the lighting, I mean, the site plans are based on a certain illumination standard. So, they ought to be sure that that illumination that's presented on the plan is also correct.
Okay. Thank you. On page nine of the EAF, E1A, it says existing land uses and it says check all the uses that occur on adjoining and near the project site. So, you have commercial, other, which is the church and the school, and rural checked here. But there's also residential in this neighborhood and that's not checked. I think on page 10, G, it says there was a previous petroleum spill at the subject property approximately 2007. Now, Ron's memo says that that was actually 1987. So, if that could just be corrected in the next document, if that's the case. And so, that's, those are all my comments for the EAF. And then, I guess the only other thing I wanted to talk about is the landscaping, which I think we probably will address going forward. But where, you know, just whether, where the stream is delineated so that we're not planting trees in the buffer, you know, however the landscaping is, because there's a, isn't it like 100-foot buffer? Because we had that problem with Magazino where there were trees that were planted in the wetlands. So, in terms of the screening that needs to happen, we just need to be sure that whatever gets planted, first of all, is actually going to screen and isn't necessarily going to, a white pine will become a tall tree and lose its understory, I believe. So, that may not be the right choice. But, you know, if we're going to actually be screening, we should be screening with things that are appropriate. And I think that's it for me.
Anyone else on the board?
I'd like to address the EAF comments with a revised EAF. Some of them are minor. And obviously, the lights are, if they're 1,500 lumens, the architectural plan was incorrect and how it added those up, that comes from the canopy provider. They have standards which are throughout the gasoline industry for safety. And so, as your canopy changes size, they change the quantum of lumens and number of lights that they add. So, this one has six, 1,500s. And that's pretty standard for this size canopy, which is one of the most common canopies out there. And obviously, we meet the foot candles at the boundary. As for landscaping, we're happy to change from white pines. I understand the life cycle of a white pine. It'll be attractive for 15 years, but in 30 years, it won't be the right plant. So, maybe some cedars or something like that, which would grow a little differently, would be appropriate. And we'll certainly stay outside of the wetland buffer.
And the dimensions of the canopy itself?
It's shown as 24 by 32 on plan.
That's correct.
There's no one else on the board? I just want to, go ahead.
No, thank you.
Okay. We have names on this sign-in sheet, for those who want to speak. We're going to ask you to limit it to three minutes and we're going to, we'll cut you off at three minutes, so.
No, excuse me. I really object to that.
Yes.
This room is not full of people. Where you could at least give us time to express our views. And three minutes for someone is simply not enough, Anthony. I'm sorry. I mean, it's not that many people standing up like you did at the other public hearing with over 100. And I think it's really vital that you allow us to have time to address big issues that are serious and really concern, health and safety issues.
How much time would you like?
I probably need about 10 minutes. And I think other people will need more, maybe less than that. But I think certainly the planning board can indulge us in if we have a comprehensive review of material that we think this board needs to hear. I think it's always that.
Can I add?
No. I want to talk to one person at a time. If we address it, we don't get everybody in tonight. The public hearing does not have to be closed. It can be continued. It's not a one-night affair.
I understand that. But we could cut me off after three minutes when I have not finished my presentation and then start over again from where I left off? That's not even possible.
No, we'll let you finish then. And there'll be other people who may not get in tonight who'll have to come back.
Anthony, excuse me. I'm sure that there are other people here who are not going to speak who will certainly dedicate their time to me or others who need more time.
How does the board feel?
I think there should be some type of limit. Honestly, it looks like we'd be setting a precedent here.
Anyone else?
One of the things that was useful about the meeting when we had 100 people and we limited the amount of time that two people spoke is that we found that people tended to be clear about what they wanted to address. Because sometimes when there is no limit, people go on for a long time and they repeat themselves.
They ramble. I understand that.
Yeah. And so, it seemed like it was actually, to me personally, it seemed like it was helpful to the public to have a limit.
I understand that point very well, as I have been on the board myself for many years. However, you're talking about a group of people who have spent weeks preparing and researching on this particular site plan. And therefore, we're not rambling. We're concise, we're thoughtful, we're logical, and we're intelligent.
Joan, I'll extend to five minutes. We're going to have a cutoff in five minutes.
Is there anybody here that's not going to speak who will dedicate their five minutes to me? Thank you.
How are we doing here procedurally? Is this something, how are we doing here procedurally?
There's no rule that says that you have to limit people's time. There's no rule that says that you can't limit people's time. You do, however, have to give the public a fair opportunity to express themselves. Three minutes? You know, it's not as big a crowd as last time. I think five is reasonable and you could waive it if the person's carrying on. Or you could allow someone else to dedicate their time over, assuming they've signed up to speak.
All right. We'll play that.
As long as people aren't repeating themselves, I.
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, one person's repetition is another person's valid points. We'll have to make decisions as we go along. I'm going to stop calling by the names and these people can speak. And let me just, let's back up a little bit. Let's keep it reasonable, all right? If you have a point to say and you have more to say, as soon as I, the board or any of us, me, decide it's starting to ramble or get repetition, we're going to stop. So.
And if people have written statements, they could hand them in as opposed to read them word for word.
Yeah.
The board will certainly read everything that's handed over.
We already have some correspondence that's going to be entered in the record. So, if you do have something written, we'll take it and it'll be filed with the record. So, I don't know if everybody on here has indicated they want to speak on this issue, but I'll go by the list here. Any other, any further questions or clarifications? First one is Daniel Potts. Unless you want to, and anyone wants to dedicate their time to Mrs. Turner, let us know.
I will be very brief. I come as a member of the vestry of St. Phillips in the Highlands, not in a very official capacity. We had discussed the plan, not about the canopy, that is not of concern, but the used car lot is definitely a very big concern because of the kindergarten, because of the ambiance of the area, of the church. This has caused great disquiet amongst the vestry. And I would just like that to be registered. And we certainly could put in a written submission with more detail that relates to the church and to the preschool. Thank you.
Thank you. Second on the list, Wally Schaefer.
Wally Schaefer, I live in the Hamlet of Garrison. At the planning board meeting on February 21st, there was a conversation between Mr. Gaba, Town Council, and Mr. Ibrahim, the property owner, regarding the proposal to sell used cars. Mr. Gaba clarified that this was to be strictly an accessory use for the repair garage, to dispose of cars abandoned by their owners. Mr. Ibrahim confirmed that and stated, "At the most, I'll have one or two at a time for sale." But in his application, the number was increased to five. In a letter to the planning board, Mr. Gainor, the town engineer, stated, "The property owner seeks to sell a small number of vehicles from the property, as sometimes vehicles which have been repaired or never picked up by the owner." Again, this seems to run counter to what has actually happened. As of yesterday, there were eight vehicles on that lot that appeared to be unregistered. And some have been there for a long time. We've seen no documentation regarding how the current vehicles were obtained or how they will be disposed of. That should be required before this proposal is even considered. If there is a legitimate need to dispose of abandoned vehicles, no mention has been made of alternative methods. For example, why couldn't they be sold at a used car auction? If a limit of two or more vehicles were allowed to be sold for the reason mentioned, how would that be enforced when a limit of zero has gone unenforced for years? Even after a violation notice was issued after, over half a year ago, these vehicles are still littering our neighborhood. The definition of a junkyard in section 107-2 of our code seems to describe what the back lot has become. We've shown you photos of vehicle parts lying in and next to the stream that runs through it. Anecdotally, we've learned the owner has purchased used cars that were not abandoned. On the business card of the owner, right at the top, under Garrison Gulf, the next two words are auto sales in capital letters. A variance request for the sale of used vehicles at this site was unanimously denied by the zoning board of appeals because the zoning code specifically prohibited car sales there. Though that part of the code has since become more ambiguous, this precedent should be heavily considered because the nature of this special hamlet has not changed. A variance for the canopy, a variance for a canopy at this site was also denied unanimously, which happens to be the only thing on record about a canopy at that site that we've found. In the notes, the zoning board stated, "The neighborhood resembles a small hamlet with Route 9D meandering its way through the middle. The feeling is very rural and country, unlike a village or center of town." That's exactly how it is today and that's how we want to keep it. No mention has been made of how used vehicles would be advertised. Would there be even more signs? Would there be prices on their windshield? Would they be shuttled between the screened area and spots more visible to traffic and neighbors? Few would deny that this accumulation of used vehicles is an eyesore that degrades the beautiful, historic, and largely residential hamlet of Garrison. We have heard no reason how the sale of used cars would benefit the residents of this neighborhood, most of whom clearly do not want this to happen, as you will see tonight, I believe. What we would like is for the unregistered vehicles on the site to be removed immediately. Thank you.
Number three is Jeff, I'm not sure, Grokot, is it?
Grokot, yes. Before I start, can I ask, we, the Garrison-Hamlet Association submitted a letter in March and that will be part of this record because that includes a lot of concerns that we may not get to tonight.
All correspondence is part of the record.
Okay. And you're going to hear tonight from more people on other issues in addition to used car sales. You're going to hear about zoning. You're going to hear about environmental concerns. You're going to hear about light and pollution issues. What I would like to do is step back and discuss a document that was designed to guide you, I think, on the planning board in your decision. And that's the Phillips Town Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in 2006. Many of you may have been involved, at least in this room. It was the product of five years of meetings and public hearings. And the result was a common blueprint for the sort of community that we want to build and the sort of development that we have agreed it's part of that plan to defend against. The plan started with the realization that Phillips Town stands apart because it has managed to avoid the kind of overdevelopment that a person can drive 15 minutes in any direction to find. Four-lane highways, subdivisions, strip malls, and sprawling commercial areas. The first among the plan's goal, goals is this, I'm quoting, "Goal number one, conserve Phillips Town's rural, historic, and river community character." I'm going to stick my glasses on, this will be easier. Phillips Town is a unique place, I'm still quoting, "Characterized by great natural beauty, historic places, and a sense of small-town community. This uniqueness is fragile and could be lost through a rapid influx of development. Development should be done in a matter, in a manner, that is sensitive to the town's special, rural, and historic qualities." That's the end of the quote. The plan speaks directly to why we are here tonight. It says, "The overarching theme of these goals is that residents would like Phillips Town's traditional qualities to be maintained and enhanced." So, you don't need to hear it from the people in this room. We've already decided it as part of the comprehensive plan of 2006. This does not say Phillips Town's traditional qualities should be slowly degraded. It doesn't say that someone who should, someone should be able to sell used cars at a gas station because they've already been doing it in clear violation of their permit. I'm going to submit this. I'm going to skip parts. The Garrison-Hamlet mixed-use zone has been in danger in recent years of veering into the sort of development that we do not want. The post office down the street has been transformed from a small walk-in station with a few trucks to an operation with nearly a dozen trucks. It has become an eyesore and an early morning noise problem. That's a federal government issue. That's not something the town had any control over. But it's a warning of how extremely easy it can be to turn a quaint strip of road into an unsightly one. I also want to note tonight that we have, I don't know if Mr. Ibrahim is here. Yeah, okay. So, we have Mr. Ibrahim, hi, and his representatives representing one business. We have homeowners here representing dozens and dozens of concerned homes, between those of us who are here and those of us who sent their best wishes for us here tonight. That balance of one business to multiple homeowners is telling, and it's reflected too in the comprehensive plan. When there's a question between the interests of residents and the interest of businesses, the plan makes that priority very clear. Phillips Town draws the vast majority of, vast majority of its tax revenues not from businesses, but from homeowners. When the plan was written, 79% of Phillips Town's tax base came from residential property. That's the inverse of surrounding areas that have to rely on growth in business to create a growth in tax. Because so little of the tax base is commercial, even doubling the value of commercial development would have minimal impact on the tax base, the plan points out. I read that as a clear mission statement that's implied in that plan. Your fundamental mission is not to expand businesses that are inappropriate. This is not even a toss-up. The focus must be on preservation of the area and the home values of tax-paying residents. These residents have come here exactly because of our and your commitment to the vision of preserving rural character. We're fortunate to live in a community whose leaders have had the foresight and the vision to preserve it. The approval of used car sales on this site will result in clear degradation of the property, the neighborhood, and one of the most character-filled byways in Phillips Town, which, by the way, is a state-designated scenic zone, also covered in the comprehensive plan. All of this would be against the words and. All of this would be against the words and spirits of the comprehensive plan. While the gas station's operators have run a very friendly operation, they are already also, as Wally Schaefer pointed out, selling used cars in violation right now, showing that they will not abide by any conditions you may attempt to put on any plan approval. The board has been warned that even the most limited approval of car sales could easily open the door to activities that cannot and have not been enforced. On behalf of my neighbors, we call on the planning board to act in accordance with the comprehensive plan and reject what would be a clear degradation of our area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual, I can't read the handwriting, was 1135 Route 9D?
Yes.
Sir?
My name is Baldev Raju, 1135 Route 9D, and I am in the favor of to give the permission to put the canopy. Without canopy, he cannot run the business. And the people are speaking over here. They moved here two years ago, five years ago, and that place is mixed-use for, I don't know how long. I am here almost 45 years, and those businesses are here, and those people, if they don't like it, they can move it. They know it is here. They are talking about the post office. Post office from the '60s. If they, they blind when they come over here to buy the house, you should move it from here. You don't deserve it. And I am here, the only one. Those people surrounding there, they hold my delivery truck in the middle of the road, and their people are discriminating me. And they are thinking they own this. This is a mixed-use business. If we don't spend the money on the business, how we live on that? And those people, I want to know that. They go to buy the grocery. If those people did stop there, where they go to buy the grocery? Another thing. We need it. Without the canopy, he cannot run the business. He needs it. So please, if I need more time, I will come. Thank you. I want to listen, other people.
Sanderson, 32 Grassy Lane?
So, short thoughts. My name is Alistair Sanderson, and I live with my wife Wendy on Grassy Lane, which is about 100 yards or so up 9D from the Gulf Gas Station. The proposal to legitimize and greatly expand the used car business run by the owner of the Gulf Gas Station in Garrison gravely impacts road safety. On the already hazardous short stretch of Route 9D between the U.S. post office and the Garrison Union Free School, in the few seconds it takes to cover that stretch of road, which has no sidewalks or crosswalks for pedestrians, a driver encounters intersections with Nelson Lane and Grassy Lane, residential driveways, and the entrances and exits of vehicles and pedestrians into and out of the post office, the Garrison Cafe, a real estate office, a Pilate studio, the Garrison School, St. Phillips Church and its nursery school, and the Gulf Gas Station. A bend in the road and a couple of hills offers still more challenges to the driver, gauging a complex and distracting situation as at many times of the day does the heavy volume and speed of the traffic. A 2005 study by the New York State Department of Transportation found that 65% of vehicles on this stretch of road exceeded the 40 miles per hour speed limit by at least 5 miles per hour. At least, as you may very well know, is putting it mildly. We also need to take into account the 25 miles per hour speed limit set up in part of the stretch of road. It's there to safeguard the children of the two schools, yet an astonishingly large number of drivers, in my experience, pay no attention to it whatsoever. All this is to say that there's a high potential for accidents on that stretch of road, and indeed, accidents happen. In July, for example, a car zoomed off 9D straight across the parking lot of the Garrison Cafe and into its outside tables before crashing into a wall. Fortunately, no one was eating outside at the time. In June, there were two other accidents, a three-car head-on collision in front of the cafe and a collision in front of the Garrison School. All this is to say that for the planning board to go ahead and legitimize the used car business run by the owner of the Gulf Station in Garrison and to let him develop it is simply to increase the likelihood of accidents. You would, sad to say, and in effect, be legitimizing an accident waiting to happen. We do not need even more hazardous traffic patterns with even more vehicles swinging in and out of the Gulf Station, nor, by the way, should we have to live right now with the Gulf Station's used car without license plates business and its cars roaring dangerously up and down Nelson Lane next to the Garrison School. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Margaret Yonko Haynes?
I'm Margaret Yonko Haynes. I lived on Nelson Lane for 25 years, and I'm going to be reading a statement from Barbara Tierney, who's one of my neighbors on Grassy Lane, and then if there's time left, I just have like one or two sentences that I'd like to say. So, in this statement, when I say "I," I'm Barbara Tierney, I'm not me. Dear members of the planning board, I am a resident of Grassy Lane. First, let me say that the workers in the Gulf, Garrison Gulf Station are very nice people. Once in a bad snowstorm, my husband, son, and I were trying to get to Metro North Station on foot, and one of the guys there drove us down instead. They are pleasant when you buy gas. I'm sure the owner, Arafat Ibrahim, is a nice person as well. Yet our central question remains: Why does this stretch of 9D and Garrison need a used car lot? Are there not spots in Wappingers or Fish Gill that are more appropriate for such a use? There are eight children residing in homes in the immediate vicinity of the gas station on Nelson Lane, 9D, and Grassy Lane. These children, most of whom go to Garrison School, are not allowed to walk along the stretch of road to the school. Some of the kids are in sixth grade and still their parents view the road as too dangerous. There are two, there were two bad accidents right in front of the gas station this summer. The curves in the road to the south and north make a challenge for anyone on foot. There are no sidewalks. Now we want to have people test-driving cars on Nelson Lane, which has happened, next to the school, adding to the danger. This is a bad accident waiting to happen. What will you say if a child gets struck by someone test-driving a car who doesn't know the area and doesn't care about the school or the nearby residents, but rather wants to see how fast the car can go? Please also note that according to an interview in the Highlands Current in 2013, Mr. Ibrahim was quoted as saying this, quote, "Ibrahim's vision for the Gulf, for the Gulf include the addition of a used car lot as well as a shuttle service that transports patrons between the garage and train station where their cars are having work done. Regarding making a transition to a 24-hour service, Ibrahim said he'd consider it if it, if sales comply." I don't know what that means, close quote. So if the canopy delivers Mr. Ibrahim more sales, will he then transition to a 24-hour service? Will you say okay to that as well, because he deserves to make good money as a businessman while the residents endure all-night traffic and lighting? Are we to trust a person who is already selling used cars there, has used car sales emblazoned on his business card, and has been cited by the building inspector for violations? Would you, if this were your neighborhood? I'll close by quickly noting the broader context here. We all bought homes in Garrison because of something special the area has to offer: lots of green space and smart limits on development. We are not anti-business at all. We are pro-business if it makes sense for our neighborhood, which has a church, a school, many residents, and many children. When we have fought changes in our hamlet, it's because the business doesn't make sense for the neighborhood. We are all affected by the blighted properties on the other side of the road: the dilapidated Garrison Cafe, where the renter told us bats live inside, and the post office now with giant tubes coming out the side, a back parking lot strewn with trash, and mail trucks arriving as early as 4:00 a.m. You're probably aware that the post office routes were placed there without any kind of impact study on the largely residential area with some mixed-use plots, not the other way around. The trucks, noise, and filth are an eyesore and earsore that we have all been forced to live with for years. Here's a small but telling example of how we've reached a tipping point. The Garrison Realty Office next to the gas station now puts toilets and used stoves out front for days and sometimes weeks. We have gotten the idea that it's okay to do that, since the area looks so seedy now. Can you blame them? You on the board have the power to be, to be sure that no part of Garrison starts to look like a strip mall or a particularly ugly part of Route 9. We detect this feeling of, oh, you moved in there, you deserve what you get, but we don't. We all keep our homes up beautifully. We all are friends. We all pay taxes, and we all vote. I feel I have to be blunt here. To ignore the concerns of a community for the sake of one man's business plan is to be derelict in your duties, even if certain codes are met. You are stewards of a special community, not a rubber stamp for a used car lot. Thank you for this opportunity to share my views, Barbara Tierney. And I just very quickly wanted to say, I've been to many, every meeting that, where this subject has come up, and every time the petitioner mentions this alleged approval of a canopy and yet has never shown the approval, many of us have scoured the records and cannot find such approval. The board has never asked for any evidence of that. If it is important that there was a prior approval, I ask that you ask that such proof of that be, that prior approval be provided to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Turner?
I'm sorry to be so insistent about time, but I think the issues I'm going to address tonight are critical for your understanding. So, apologies for my pardon? Oh, is this okay? How's that? All right. So I want to address the zoning issues concerning the filing of 1122 Route 9D site plan. I think they are extremely important, as I've said, and I do so in the hope that an understanding of some of them will alleviate some of the confusion, misunderstanding, and mistakes made with this filing. So please bear with me. I appreciate the difficulty in reviewing this application. I was a member of the zoning board of appeals for over 10 years, and I recognize the difficulties that exist when the interests of property owners, especially business owners, come into conflict with the zoning laws. The planning board's responsibility to serve the interests of the applicant must also consider the interests of the community as defined in our zoning code. A mixed-use hamlet, as defined in the code, quote, "allows for the expansion in the traditional scale, density, architectural style, and mixed-use character of the existing hamlets." A commercial-sized canopy as well as a used car lot inserted on a scenic Route 9 can hardly be considered if one takes seriously this definition. In reviewing this site plan and abstract design, as you all have seen on the wall, it's easy to overlook the neighborhood characteristics of the Garrison hamlet and the deleterious, deleterious effects this proposed project would have on its unique character. There are three zoning regulations that are relevant to this application, and they must be considered in your decision. They are its non-conforming status, existing precedents, and code interpretations. As to the non-conforming status, prior to 1975, Phillips Town had no zoning code. This changed in 1957, when the town adopted its first code, systematizing rules for future growth. Properties that did not meet these new guidelines were grandfathered, which meant owners did not lose their property rights, and they could continue as they were. However, certain conditions were attached to these properties, hence the non-conforming statutes found in Article 6, Section 175-23 to 175-28, that prohibits owners from enlarging, moving, or changing the use of their property. 1122 Route 9D falls into this non-conforming state. The property was owned by James Bosco in 1942. He operated a gas station consisting of one sign, two pumps, one island light, and one post slip. The property was sold over the years, but its non-conforming status never changed. As such, it continues to operate without a certificate of occupancy for over 60 years. Moreover, it operates as a three-in-one business: repair garage, gas station, and convenience store, contrary to zoning regulations as noted above. When the Phillips Town Code was amended in 2011 to bring it into conformity with the recently comprehensive plan, it did not remove, negate, or in any way invalidate the non-conforming regulations. They were specifically carried over to the newly amended code. These statutes were recently upheld in a lawsuit initiated by the town against the rock-crushing business located at One Lane Gate in Cold Spring. The appellate court stated, and I quote, "Phillips Town, Phillips Town authorities established beyond a reasonable doubt that the non-conforming use was illegal in 1983 and thereafter," end quote. The confusion, and this is critical, I think, to our, what's happened here tonight with the site plan, I mean, the confusion or misunderstanding on the part of the applicant and the code enforcement officer and perhaps members of this board result from the 2011 amended code's use table, which permits the canopy with a minor site plan application and which the applicant subsequently presented to this board. This site is encumbered, unrealized by the applicant, the zoning board officer, and the board, this site is encumbered by its pre-existing non-conforming status. A diligent search through the building departments and assessor's files would have clarified this. The use of these regulations in the town's lawsuit mentioned above reinforces and employs its lawsuit, in its lawsuit, with non-conforming regulations is to the applicant's advantage to ignore these statutes. However, the planning board cannot do so. Ignoring the applica, the applicability for 1122 Route D when it was applied to the town's lawsuit at One Lane Gate in Cold Spring could be construed a spot zoning, another zoning infraction. While sympathetic to the business owners of the, and the present owners, the present owners as well as the preceding one, the owners are not denied the reasonable use of their property. In fact, the zoning code statute allows owners the right to convert their property to a legal, non-conforming use by applying for a use variance, 175-59C1 in the zoning code. In some cases, a special-use permit may achieve this goal as well. Alternatively, a gas station attendant could be hired to assist customers, thus avoiding a canopy altogether. While canopies have become the recent custom and increased profitability for owners, they do not supersede zoning laws. I want to stress, there are alternatives available to the applicant to ensure the property rights are not forfeited by the town's zoning code. The next zoning issue I want to address is precedents, and there are four of them. In 19, the first of them is, in 1973, Irving Cone leased a gas station at 1122 Route 9D from Arnold Oil and filed for a variance to operate a used car lot. The zoning board of appeals denied that variance. The minutes of these deliberations provide the reasons for that ZBA denial, which include its non-conforming status as well as its precedent-setting effect. And I quote now, "A zoning board may be ordered by the courts to issue variances and/or permits based on precedent." And there is a case law night versus Amelkin, which I will leave with you in my notes here. These reasons are as pertinent today as they were 46 years ago. The second precedent, in 1995, Spain Oil Company applied for a variance, number 545, at the same location for a canopy over its new dispenser pumps. The ZB- The ZBA denied that variance. Noteworthy, the ZBA gave as one of its reasons for denying the variance was that the service station is a pre-existing, nonconforming site. The third precedent is at 1135, if I could turn the page, sorry. Well, there we go. In 2000, Appeal Number 617 was filed by the Verjus for a canopy over the existing pumps, their gas pumps located at 1135 Route 9D. This appeal was denied by the ZBA once again, reinforcing many of the same reasons given for the other denials mentioned above. It is inconceivable that another request for a canopy for a gas station across the street on Route 9D from this one would be granted, given that so many of the same conditions exist today. The fourth one I'm not going to mention as a precedent, it has to do with the lawsuit against the rock-crushing business on One, and that was also a precedent. Now, the last point I want to make has to do with interpretations. Mr. Galva advised the Planning Board members at its July 19, 2019, meeting that what the board needs to do, and I quote, "is to make a determination as to whether or not accessory sales of five vehicles are a usual and customary use with a filling station like this." Continuing, Mr. Galva stated, "It is a factual determination for the board to make," and he does not see any reason that it can't be made after the public hearing. This advice is questionable because the Planning Board has no jurisdiction in interpreting whether used car sales are an accessory use. Interpretations are the domain of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Section 17559 of the Phillips Town Code states, and I quote, "The Zoning Board of Appeals shall have all the power and duties prescribed by law in this chapter in connection with appeals to review any order, requirements, decisions, interpretations, etc." The Court of Appeals, and this is another quote.
If I could just stop you on that, I think I can save you some time there. I agree with you that, in fact, interpretations of the zoning code are to be made by the Zoning Board of Appeals. My advice to the Planning Board was, if they find that it's established, absolutely clear, no question about it, that car sales are permitted accessory uses with gas stations, then they can proceed. But if they can't make that determination, it isn't clear, here's a factual issue, then they should refer to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the board has to decide if it's established in the town of Phillips Town that accessory sales of used automobiles are permitted with gas stations, or if they just don't know.
Who makes that determination? The Planning Board or the ZBA?
If the Planning Board will in the first instance determine if it is well-established, if there's some precedent for it, if it's widespread in the town, there's no question about it. If there is a question about it, then there'll be a referral to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an interpretation.
But that's not clear in your statement. If you're asking the board to make an interpretation.
Perhaps you took it out of context, that was my advice to the board.
You're asking the board to make an interpretation in which they have no authority to do so. They have to refer to the Zoning Board. I'm not going to argue.
They don't if it's established. If they determine it's established and clear, they do not need to make a referral to the Zoning Board. If they determine that there's any question about it, then they do.
That's right. If it's not established. Why would I argue with you? But anyway, going back to my point, the Court of Appeals, the New York Court of Appeals says upcelled that a Zoning Board of Appeal performs a quasi-judicial function when it renders an interpretation of a zoning precision, and it should act according to its own precedence. In numerous case law, the court has reinforced the principle that a Board of Appeals is the sole interpreter of the ordinance. The legal status of the ZBA to render an interpretation of used car sales as an accessory use as proposed by the applicant is undeniable and is upheld by case law. Therefore, this application must be referred to the ZBA for its determination. To do otherwise is to negate the principles upon which the reasonable and orderly development of Phillips Town are founded. In closing, I cite Section 175-65D, Site Plan Review and Approval Criteria. That states, and I quote, "In reviewing site plans, the Planning Board shall ensure that the application complies with all applicable provisions of this chapter." Thank you for your time and patience. It's not exactly your most favorite big-time story.
Give it to the secretary, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony.
We have three names here on.
I'll just go.
You are Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Okay.
I signed in my two daughters who are here with me as well.
Hi, so my name is Lauren Beniaras, and I'm a Garrison resident, and I have two children at the Garrison School. One's in first grade, one's in fourth grade. I pick them up every day by driving south on 90, turning left onto Nelson Lane, and then turning right to go up to the Garrison School pickup line. Within about a twenty-square-foot space, right where the buses enter, so I don't know, three, four buses, I don't, three or four school buses have to use one lane, one entrance. About two feet away from that, every parent that's picking their child up in a car has to make another turn to go pick up theirs. Directly across from that is the entrance to this gas station. It's an extremely heavily congested area where literally every day when I pick up my children, I have to be completely on my toes, careful about where I'm going, because even if you're going at very slow speeds, an accident there could happen very quickly. And anecdotally, I know many people who've had near misses there. So adding used cars or more cars to that very congested space, I think, would be negligent. I think it would be a recipe for disaster. In terms of the canopy, I feel like I haven't heard enough about the environmental impact of that. I'm very concerned about possible contamination of water sources, which has historically happened in that general vicinity when, I don't know the details of it, but I'm sure it's in the record. But there have been previous sort of examples of in going deep or removing a gas pump, or there are others here that can speak more easily to that, and it wasn't from your gas station, it was from the one across the street. But there's already been a history of water, sorry?
It's from both.
Oh, it's from both, okay. So there's already been a history of water contamination there, and I don't want to be sending my children to school worried about them drinking water from the water fountains because they're going to be drinking contaminated water.
Thank you. This is, next one, Nanjet?
Yeah, can you speak over the phone?
Is this in place of your wife?
Yeah, she's my wife.
Okay, as long as it's different from your original comments.
Yeah, I don't say too long.
Well, as long as it's different from your original comments.
Like those people.
No, as long as it's different from your original comments.
Yeah, why deny my canopy? Because she came to me by her end of the place, and I didn't give to her, and she was in the board that time. So that's, she take the advantage to deny my canopy. So that's I want to say. So she's talking about taking, and I have the question, what do you call the Phillips Town, only that area, or Cold Spring, or Coortland, or other place? If it's only that area, why do you have the gas station and canopy on 403, and you have the canopy in Phillips Town, Cold Spring? Why not he has it? So thank you.
Melissa Andor, Steve Harris.
Hi, my name is Melissa Harris, and I reside on Nelson Lane in Garrison. I'm actually also going to speak on behalf of my husband, who has laryngitis and can't speak tonight. My concerns have to do with the drilling process and construction process for a new canopy, the potential for having a negative impact on the well water of many of the surrounding homes. In 2005, our water, our well water was contaminated with MTBE. It's a carcinogenic gasoline additive, which was subsequently proven to be a result of two oil spills, one from, at the time, in 1987, it was the Garrison Texaco, and also the Gulf Station across the street. There was a spill in, I believe it was 92, I don't have that date written down. My concern is that with new drilling or construction in that area, any residual MTBE or any new contaminants could expose our groundwater and our wells to, you know, these contaminants. Although I'm not opposed to an aesthetically pleasing canopy, I would ask that if this portion goes forward, that we would all be eligible to have our well water tested and frequently during this whole process and after. I would also like to add that I have correspondence dating back to 2006 regarding wetlands determination, that it was determined that 1122 Route 9D contains local wetlands that are protected by town regulation, and any activity within 100 feet of these wetlands does require a permit. So I just wanted to remind the board of that. And then, speaking on my husband's behalf, my husband's name is Steve Harris, he is very concerned, as am I, about the problematic issue with the used car situation. They have been selling used cars there for the five years or so that they have been in business. The problem that we have experienced on Nelson Lane is that they allow potential, you know, customers to test drive the vehicles on Nelson Lane with no tags. So these cars are unregistered, they are uninsured, and they are being essentially illegally driven up and down Nelson Lane, frequently speeding. And it's quite a safety concern. We have several young children on our road, we have dogs, and we have the Garrison School right at the end of the road. So it is, it is a very unsafe situation, and we do not agree with a used car lot being allowed on that property. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Shala Janetta. I must say first that I'm a little shaken up. I've been at a funeral all day from a Garrison community, and there was a big accident yesterday, and we lost somebody from our school. And that will be next week, another funeral to go to, but it's a very tight community. And, and I love it. And I've lived here for thirteen years, but I've lived in my new neighborhood for only two years, that I love, and I know the neighborhood, and I know my school, Garrison Schools. I have two elementary students there. And, and I love it, and I love everybody in my community, and that's why I wanted to move closer to the school. I didn't have, I'm also pro-business. I have a business. I'm pro-business, and I go to your business every day, and so do everybody in the community. It's, it's one thing to have a business for the good of the community, and it's another thing to have a business that's not in the good of the community. And there are safety issues that I'm concerned about. And just like Lauren said, our pickup for our children is right next to the school. The first bus stop on my line is right in front of the gas station, is the first bus stop, right in front of the gas station, on 90. There's been multiple accidents, everybody speeds, the town can deny it, but everybody speeds. I see it every day, I live right there. They're reminded by a short distance of the school zone, that's 25 miles an hour, but they forget, they forget. And it's not enough, it's not even a long stretch of a low enough speed limit, to tell you the truth. I don't think it's safe, there's not sidewalks, it's just, it's just not even safe enough already, yet alone to start a new business that could cause more accidents when it's not even ready already. I'm probably not saying that right. I love my community, I love the people in my community, I don't want to see anybody get hurt, and I really don't want to see a child get hurt. And the older children can even walk from the school to go to the gas station when they're old enough, and there's no safety there. And that really concerns me. And I don't want, I don't want to be the blame for that. I do believe more people would be here tonight if there wasn't this, these tragic things that have happened the last couple days. I think that more people would have been here tonight. And honestly, I've spoken to people who thought this was a joke, that this was never going to happen. What? A used car dealership next to the school? Like, they thought it was a joke. And coming, I want to say too, I feel like coming to this new neighborhood that I wasn't there before and with a minority there, I come from a mother who is an immigrant, and I can connect with you at the same time, but we have to work together for the safety of the children that are in our community, and that's the most important thing, I'm sorry. And I moved here because of the beauty, and, and for my children, for their future. Thank you.
Okay. Last one we have, signed in, Nina Padala. She left. All right, is there anyone else here who hasn't spoken and would like to speak? Excuse me.
We have one more.
I'm asking, is there any, is anyone who's not on the list who would like to speak? Please, step up, tell your name and your address.
My name is Jolene Kyler, and I live at 1136 Route 9D, which is about 100 yards away from the gas station. And I'm here to give testimony to my personal experience as a neighbor. My mission is not to put the gas station out of work, but to hopefully encourage their commitment to enhance our community and support its health, both environmentally and as a partner in the welfare of our community and its inhabitants. That might be a condition to be met in the final resolution. I have a few experiences to recount that might help you when you deliver your recommendations. About a year and a half ago, I was working in my garden, and I could smell very toxic fumes, like diesel truck emissions. At first I thought it was a truck that frequently sits across the road from my home, idling for much longer than the three-minute New York state law allows. I believe it is not defiance, but just non-informed driver that a company is responsible for educating their employees and complying to the state laws. After about 20 minutes, maybe longer, I discovered it was coming from the gas station. I got in my car, I drove over, and found a van in the back of the gas station, running, no one in it. I found the mechanic, who was very polite, and told him the fumes were toxic and overwhelming. He said someone had filled their gas tank with diesel rather than gas, and they had to run it until it was empty. I told him to turn it off. He said it only had another 15 minutes to run dry. Instead of turning it off, he moved it to the other side of the gas station. I just think this situation was due to an uninformed employee and an owner who has no idea of the impact they have on the community and the environment. Profits and maintaining employment take precedence, like most businesses. If they are given permission to expand with a lighted canopy, how do we guard against even worse, like adding music, light emitting all night long, perhaps the canopy getting an alcohol license, et cetera, whatever additional marketing devices they may see as to increase profit? Who will oversee and monitor your permissions to ensure that they are being enforced? We are policed by Carmel, and when you call them for any issue, you get a message. Please leave a message, and we will get back to you as soon as possible. To my knowledge, the Cold Spring Police are not responsible to respond to any calls from Garrison. from Garrison. The gas station also has a tanker coming in at the early morning hours, 3:00 AM, to stock their tanks, to restock their tanks. And this doesn't happen very often. I think it's maybe only like once a month. But that said, the tight space for the backup takes several tries, and, and I would say 15 minutes or so, and it's this constant, like, you know, 18-wheeler trying to back up, go forward, back up, go forward with the beeping sounds, and it's interrupted sleep, deprivation. And I think, I personally think the owners should be there to oversee the safety of those tankers, restocking their tanks to the completion. Explosions can happen. And the expression "that would never happen," as we all know, is an oxymoron. They don't live here with their families. Lastly, the day before the board did an onsite review of the gas station, the owners brought in a team to sweep and clean the grounds around the station. I have never witnessed that before, and I have been living in the same place as long as they have owned the gas station. I thank you for your time listening to our concerns, and I hope that when you come to the resolution of permissions, please consider making it clear what the limitations for noise, light, and pollutants into the wetland and the community are. Thank you again for your attention, and I have one last comment to make to Mr. Baldov, is that my great-great-grandfather founded this place. So you say we just arrived here? No, he was here way before you were here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Steve, Connor?
Well, there's no one else, which is good, but, I mean, good in the sense that we don't have to address this any further, but there really should be an understanding that all comments should be addressed to the board and not to other speakers or anyone else in the attendance. As to, I don't know if the applicant cares to say anything further at the public hearing or...
I would like to address a couple of quick things. It's, just to start with, I've had property here in Phillips Town for 17 years, but it's not a competition. We're, you know, we're all just trying to get along. So there was a couple of questions as to the canopy. I learned about the canopy being approved in 2011 from an engineer memo from Mr. Gaynor. I did not do the very thorough job that you did, apparently, going through the record. I'm sorry. So I understood it was approved. I didn't do further research. It does matter that it was previously approved. There has been a change.
Can I interrupt a minute?
Ron, going back to this.
Yeah, if I could speak to that.
Yeah, please.
The applicant's representative has made that representation before. I have been through the record, and I explained to this board and to the applicant that there was no such approval previously given for the canopy. The 2011 approval that was granted permitted the replacement of the storage tanks then in place. So new underground facilities were installed at that time. There was no approval of a canopy at that time.
So you need to correct your rec, Ron.
Was the memo incorrect, then?
If it's in a memo, it would be incorrect.
It is, it's in a memo from you, so...
I've explained that before, that there was no approval for a canopy previous to this application.
We can, we can check the record, and I'll submit something if I feel like I need to correct it. I do a lot of gas station canopy approvals. I work in a lot of gas stations. It's, for another so many years, it's an essential service, until we can all afford electric cars.
Well, let's not get into that.
But no, but there's, there's a point, and it's that times have changed, and people used to look at canopies as strictly aesthetic concern, and now there are a safety concern, and having them is something that virtually every town is approving. And Phillips Town is approving them all throughout the town. It's, it's very rare to find a gas station today without a canopy. The used car sales, that has also had occurred at a number of the other gas stations, several in Phillips Town, several of which I represent or have represented in the past. And the definition of usual and customary, having used car sales adjacent or ancillary to a service station, that is something I've seen through most planning boards, and I don't normally see it referred to the zoning board. I also do serve on my zoning board in my community, and it's not something that we've addressed during my tenure. Finally, the location of the used car sales and the canopy, I don't see that impacting the safety and the traffic. I don't think, it's not as if we have, we're going to have cars right up against the road with big stickers on them and trying to get people to slow down and pull in. There, it's set back. The idea is that somebody who's already at the gas station may go and walk and look at it after they go inside and buy a snack. It's not for to drive traffic into the station. It's just something, it's not going to change traffic. And one last, there was a couple of questions about the environmental impact of a canopy. When you, when you put a canopy, and what we're talking about is two 5x5x5 footings. The pumps are shut off, the gas tanks, everything is shut off. There's, the worst you're going to do is dig a hole and find some already contaminated dirt and actually clean the environs a little bit. It's not going to, it's not going to have any environmental impact. That soil, if you find some, and you do find them in gas stations, most gas stations had a spill. A gas station which has been here since 1942, it'd be very rare that it didn't have a spill in that number of years. And there was an extensive cleanup done here, and the only way that more cleanup's going to happen is if they do, they dig in the ground. So that's the, that's my final comments. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the board on anything you've heard? Anyone? Well, just regarding the used car sales, I did a brief tour around town. I don't know of any other gas station in town that's selling used cars. You mentioned, the last time you talked about that, you mentioned Cortland. Well, this isn't Cortland, and it's not Fishkill either. And the gas stations that are standalone, I don't know of one that has used car sales. And I don't know that the latest EAF is down to three cars. I just wonder what kind of financial contribution that would make to the, the business owner's income. And I find a very strong opposition to that, and so I'd just like to know if anybody else on the board is the same way. Tim?
Yeah, I agree with you. There are five gas stations in Phillips Town, and I don't know of any of them that sell used cars. There are businesses which do sell used cars, but they are not gas stations.
There are, in downtown Cold Spring here, which is now the Dunkin' Donuts. Years ago, he sold used cars.
They did, but they don't anymore.
They don't anymore.
Yep, true, because they, they went to convenience.
That's also Cold Spring, which is different zoning.
Yeah, I was about to tell you, there is no jurisdiction in the village of Cold Spring.
So up on Route 9, which was, used to have the beverage mart when Mr. Visal owned it, he also used to sell used cars.
Yeah, but they're not there anymore. They're not there anymore.
Sure. This is, there's not a lot of service stations still. The service station business is dying. The service station business has...
They are what they are. They're the ones, the ones they have in town are the ones that exist. Whether you think that commercially they're drying up or not, they're still there and they're still servicing the public in Phillips Town. And as Ms. Connor said, there aren't none that currently are gas stations that sell used cars.
But it's certainly not customary to sell used cars with a Dunkin' Donuts, but with a service station, it is. And that's what I'm saying is the change.
Well, I don't particularly agree in this town. But anyway, I'd like to move on. Should we call to close the public hearing?
You can close the public hearing if you don't have any further input. I thought the gentleman from the church said he might want to submit something.
Yes, I don't have it written with me.
Well, you can submit it.
Yes.
To the planning board.
Well, you can close it except... Forgive them 15 days for written submissions.
Okay, let's do that. Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
With the exception that written submission.
You can't just have one person for the...
Well, with all, I think, with all, yeah, with all submissions.
So for 15 days?
For 15 days.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Ron, we do a seeker on this?
Well, before you, before you get there.
Okay.
As we've discussed at some length, and we just, just went over now, you know, there's, there's basically three issues here. All right? The first issue is site plan in regard to the canopy, and that's pretty straightforward. They want to put up a canopy, you have to look whether it meets your site plan requirements, and of course you have the gloss on it of having to go through secret review, but I mean, it's a canopy. I'm, I'm sure that one way or another we'll be able to deal with that. Secondly, there's the issue of the accessory used car sales. And as we just got into a little bit before, and now, now again, the question of whether something is a permitted accessory use or not is basically a factual determination because this, that, the code says permitted accessory use is something that's usually customarily used and is clearly secondary to the primary use on the property. And sometimes you can clearly tell that. A garage on a single-family home is a permitted accessory use. There's, there's no question about that. You have them all over town. But other times, you have something that's a little bit more unusual, in this case, car sales. And again, as I just got done saying, and as I believe I'd said before, if you can clearly tell, it's well established that these things are accessory uses, then you don't need to send it to the zoning board. If you had all five of your gas stations in town with accessory uses for car sales, I don't think you'd have to say, oh, this is different, we're going to send you to the zoning board and see if you, you know, I mean, if they had an excessive number of cars, perhaps, something like that. You'd question whether it's truly accessory or not. But if it was the same or very similar to existing established uses, I don't think it has to go to the zoning board, all right? By the same token, if, you know, you can't say that it's something that's been prohibited as accessory uses in the past, somebody's come in for an application, and it's been determined by the zoning board, for example, that car sales are not accessory uses to gas stations, well, again, you wouldn't be able to say otherwise. But you can't say yes, and you can't say no, whether it is or it isn't, unless you have that definitive proof on one side or the other. There's five gas stations and they all do it, or the zoning board has said no in the past, or something along those lines. So if you feel it's up in the air and you can't make that determination clearly based on dispositive proof before you, you should send them to the zoning board for an interpretation. Now, perhaps the applicant wants to make a submission in one final effort to convince you otherwise, I don't know, but it's your determination, not the applicant's. They can request that. But you do that before you get into completing your secret review and making determinations on the site plan.
Is there a third thing?
Oh, the third thing was, in the event that you determine, or that they get an interpretation from the zoning board, that car sales are permitted accessory uses, then you have to consider how that would fit into site plan, because it could be the case that three cars is just fine, and it could be the case that it's too many, it's too tight on the lot, only two will work, or maybe, maybe, you know, maybe none would work, depending on, you know, what the site plan implications are of, of used car sales. So even if they are permitted accessory use, they're still going to have to meet the site plan requirements. That's the third thing.
Board comments on...
So I'm in favor of sending it to the ZBA.
Anyone else?
I am as well.
Okay. Motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So go to the ZBI, we'll send you a referral letter, and then, once you have your determination, come back to this board to complete the site plan review.
Thank you.
Anything else we should do before we... And this one, Steve.
I'm sorry.
Anything else on this issue?
No, I, I think that everything's on hold until they come back from the zoning board.
Right. Okay. No, no, you have, you keep. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, please, or seven minutes. This is a last-minute addition to the agenda, and our engineer advisor doesn't have the, his file here. And Glenn, if there's anything you need to say, we thought, we talked about just turning it over to, setting a public hearing up for it.
This, we were here a couple of months ago with this thing, and we pointed out...
And we, we pointed out to you that the house was placed within the rear setback.
Right.
So you referred us to the zoning board. We've been to the zoning board, and the, the variance was granted.
Right.
That's noted in your agenda. Essentially, the, it's a very small house, 1,600 feet on two floors altogether. So the placement of the house in the setback area was, it's a passive solar house. It was placed there to get the most gain from the solar gain, and it also avoided some grating, although the driveway got a little longer, it avoided some grating that we would have to do to pull, to pull, pull the house closer to the road. So all in all, it was a better, it was a better solution. What you're seeing before you now is the same plan. It hasn't changed. Driveway in, off of East Mountain Road, just, this site is just a little bit north of the former Carlson's Green Houses. The driveway comes in, goes down the hill and into the site, and we're going to develop the rear portion of the property. Very unlikely that anybody will see it from the road. I didn't test every possibility, but I'm certain you're not going to see it from the frontage. And it's a real fairly simple site plan. We've maintained the distances from the pond. Septic system testing has been done, that's still a pending issue. It's really a very simple, simple site plan.
Are we need referrals made? Ron?
Again, not being aware that the project was on tonight, I haven't been through the project files to know the status of those referrals that are needed. So it's, it's possible they've been done, I just don't know.
There's no referrals that would prevent the board from scheduling a public hearing on this. Then you confirm, confirm that they've been made. If they haven't been made, you can make them next month and just hold off on a decision until you receive them.
Okay. Go ahead.
You could make the, if they haven't been made, you could make them now. You don't have to make them next month.
Okay, makes a good point.
Okay, referrals to Puddin County, Board of Health.
You have, you have Board of Health and...
Fire. How about the fire company?
County, county planning, because we're, we're adjacent to state property behind us. And we have a ridgeline running through the property. I don't know if that makes mandatory referral to the conservation board or not. I don't remember. But if it does, that you might have conservation board.
Well, it's courtesy of nothing else.
Yeah. Okay, so it's three, and then the fire company. Okay, I entertain a motion to establish, set up a public hearing for this. Sholba and Fortunato?
Do you want to make a motion on the referrals, if they haven't been made already?
Okay, let's do that first. There's four referrals. Motion to that effect, the referrals. Anyone?
What's the fourth referral?
It was Board of Health, County Planning, Conservation, and Fire.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public hearing for next month? Motion?
I'm going to get a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Kim?
Four days to the session, or what?
Next.
Sorry.
Eighteen. And while we're thinking about that, for the foreseeable future, all meetings will be held at the...
Seventeen.
Seventeen. The recreation site in Garrison, Route 9D. You have a...
It's posted on the website, it's posted on the municipal channel, and I've put it on the bottom of all of my agendas, zoning, planning, and conservation. As of October 1st, all town meetings are going to be held at the Recreation Center on Glencliff down in Garrison.
107 Glencliff Drive.
But it's posted on the website.
Yeah.
It's been looking for you.
Okay. Old Business, Chandu Moss Minor Site Plan, 120 Skyline Drive.
This is a project which you've also seen before. You had a site visit, I guess it was the end of last month. This property is 13... This property is 13 acres, it's located on the north end of Phillips Town, roughly opposite Pedala's Yard, on the former Lyons property. Nate Lyons has his gravel screening process plant just off to the north of this lot. Skyline Drive is a private road that winds its way up to the hills, there's a development beyond us. As you can see, it's a sort of oddly shaped lot, it was really dictated by where the road could go. We're not, nothing is planned for the first two-thirds of the bulk of the property in, but- So, this is just an enlargement of the west end of the property. We plan to hold, to build a house during your site visit, and in the preliminary, the first plan you saw, you saw some grading in the steep slopes, the yellow and the salmon-colored slopes are the steeper slopes. So, what we've done is we've reoriented the house, we pulled it back so that we could avoid any disturbance in the steep slope area. We've oriented the garage differently, so we shortened the driveway and come at it at a better, a better and easier route into the site. We've added a proposed pool, again, we stayed out of the steep slopes area. The septic system is already approved, it was, it was, came with the lot, and so that, we're putting the septic area where the health department's already approved it. We've done some preliminary work on the stormwater pollution prevention plan, we know you have a letter from Conservation Board stating that. We don't disagree with that conclusion, so we're prepared to do that. There was an issue or a question in that letter regarding visibility. For those of you who are up there, you do have, there is a view out to the, out to this, to the southeast, to southwest, I guess. It's a very distant view, you don't see Route 9, you don't see, you don't see anything publicly accessible until you're, until it's several miles away, and then it's just roots. And that, it's, and that's part of what drove the location of the house, a significant part of what drove the location of the house, to take advantage of that view. But it will be largely screened by existing tree cover from anybody from seeing it from Route 9, or any local place. We have, we do have a ridge line running through the property, we've, the house has been designed to fall within those additional regulations that are imposed when you are in that situation. So, we're, we think we responded to those concerns in a positive way, and I'd like to move this forward.
You said the referrals have been done, you got Board of Health for septic and-
The Board of Health plan, the Board of Health has, it's been an approved plan for quite a number of years.
Previously, okay.
Yeah. And when the property was purchased, it was purchased with that valid permit being handed over.
For this size house?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Come ahead, Ron.
It's actually fairly, it's a fair, if you look at it closely, it's a fairly large system. In fact, it's a, we're actually making, probably won't build it quite as big, because I think it was a five-bedroom system, and now it's a four, it's a four-bedroom, but we do have the permit.
As the board will recall, at the applicant's initial meeting last month with the board, the original proposal did propose some disturbance to steep slopes. At that time, the board had suggested the applicant reconsider the placement, so it was to avoid disturbance of those slopes. At the site visit, the end of August, the applicant acknowledged that they would plan to pull the house and site disturbance, so that no disturbance of regulated steep slopes would occur. These plans now evidence that. So, the consideration of the need for a special permit that would permit disturbance of those slopes is no longer necessary. So, now it's just a straight site plan application before this board. Relative to seeker, the current DEC regulations specify that single-family houses to be constructed on already-approved lots are classified as a type-two action, which means they've been deemed not to have an adverse impact on the environment. So, the board's only obligation is to classify it as such, and that concludes your environmental responsibilities. The board did not take that action in August, so I would suggest that you take that action now at tonight's meeting to conclude your secret responsibilities. As the chair indicated, all referrals have been made, Conservation Board has responded. Various of their comments were already included in my technical comments that you've had. And the only entity that has not yet responded is the fire department, and they may or may not offer comments. So, the last thing for the board to consider is that since it's a minor site plan for a residential building project, that the public hearing is discretionary. The board took no, made no decision in August as to whether one would be held or not. And again, tonight, you should deliberate on that and determine whether a public hearing will be scheduled, or just conclude that none is necessary.
Okay, so the first motion we should do is to declare it a minor project.
Well, you did declare it minor in August, that's been done. That's been done.
The seeker.
Did we?
You have to do a seeker declaration.
So, can I just ask a question about seeker? So, is there any lot in this town that isn't an approved lot? I mean, like, what does that mean?
If you're seeking subdivision approval, it wouldn't be an approved-
So, it's only, so it only would relate to things that have not been subdivided already?
Well, in commercial uses at any time.
In commercial uses.
But if you have a single-family home on an approved lot, then you're going to be a type-two action.
Uh-huh, but it says, in this note that Ron has here, it says, single-family, two-family, or even three-family.
Single and duplex, I'm sure of, three, probably, but I've never, if it's in process, so I'm sure that it's the case.
That's right out of their regulations.
And so, how does that impact, you know, like, the other DEC issues about, like, timber rattlers and stuff like that? Like, how did-
An approved lot to begin with.
Well, again, wait a minute. The issue of any applicable environmental regulations will still apply, and the technical comments that I've offered, and as well as what the CB has raised, they've raised a similar concern to mine, is that we want them to acknowledge in the site plan that there are statutory limitations to address concerns over potential endangered species on the property.
But that's outside of-
But that'll have to be outside of seeker, but it'll still be evidenced on the site plan that'll be necessary before I permit you to sign the site plan drawings.
So, does that mean, like, going forward, that we have to, because we're not going to do seeker on almost everything, right?
Well, not on these ones that are coming in for site plan because it's a large home, or because it's in, you know, scenic overlook and it's, you have slopes-
But we still have to sort of do, like, the side seeker stuff, which is, I mean, like, you know.
Well, we wouldn't call it sides.
Well, come on.
Yes, environmental considerations that are in regulations would be, would be applicable, yes, that's true.
So, we won't have a list to follow, like we have with seeker, we'll have to have our own list?
Well, you have Ron's encyclopedic memory.
Okay. Well, you better always figure that out. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Any of these projects, we make a review of the environmental mapper, identify, obviously, any issues raised in the initial EAF that's filed with any application. So, when they're flagged or known, those technical comments are inserted in the document, and the applicant's requested to address them. And that's what's happening in this instance as well.
Okay. I want to, just before we go any further, because I'm sorry, I was not here in August, but I just want to ask a question. Is this a 4,000-square-foot house or a 5,000-square-foot house?
Or four.
Because it says 5,000 in some places and four in others.
My, yeah, my understanding and what was based at the site visit was a 5,000-square-foot house.
Okay, so, because it says 4,000 square foot on the memo from July, okay. And then, one more thing. Scenic ridge line, can you explain where, how that works? 50 feet out, 50 feet down?
Not 50 feet out, it's 50 feet down.
50 feet down. And in-
Vertically down, or?
Right. Yeah. The way-
On the ridge.
To tell you the truth, the, defining it really is a very difficult thing. You have to sort of, sort of be arbitrary, there's no, there's no really mathematical way to do it. So, because, because the ridge line is running left and right, and it's running up and down. So, what we do is we take and draw the, where it is is usually pretty evident from the topo, it's usually where the nose, the nose of the contour line sticks out, all right? So, we draw a line like this, following that topographic data, and then at each of the contours, we draw a perpendicular line to where, to 50 feet below that particular contour. Then we go to the next one, draw a line out 50 feet below. And so, if you then take that line, and you think about dropping it into the ground, and then extruding it out left and right, where it comes out at the ground is the end of the, is the end of the controlled area. And that can be, that could be half a mile sometimes.
Okay. So, in this particular case, you have the town line, which is the high, the line that's further up that sheet, and you have your own line?
Yes.
Right? Is this house entirely below the town line?
Yes, the town line is, I put that on there because that's what's on your maps, but if you read the code about defining a ridge line, it says that it's supposed to be developed individually from topo, actually, it's a topographic survey, but it doesn't say aerial mapping, but we use aerial mapping here. So, the town line is really irrelevant. It's just, it's irrelevant because the town, when you look at it on the map, it says it's here.
Yeah.
You read the code about it, and it says, here is just a demonstration, you develop it from the topo on the ground, which is what we did.
Who did the town maps? Did you do them?
Did I do them?
Uh-huh.
No, some people that were fooling around with GIS who did them.
I was just wondering, because I was wondering why, I thought maybe you had done them.
No, actually, the land trust, the land trust did them, and they did them from the, I believe that they did them from USGS quadrangle maps, which are very rough. They're, I mean, for their purpose, they're fine, but they're not for this kind of definition. And that's why they did it.
I just wanted to understand what the difference was.
If we get specific on this project, the ridge line regulations totally encompass the development proposed, right? And ultimately, where that goes is that it places restrictions on visibility and height of structure. And that's what you're applying to this.
All right. See if I, I might have had one more question. I wrote it down. So, does this road already exist?
Yes. It's paved up to a cul-de-sac.
Are there any other, in this subdivision of four lots, with the fifth lot touching five, are there any houses up there?
There's another, there's a house back here, I'm not sure if there's a second one or not. There's a second one here, and there's the original farmhouse on the right, as you come in. This will be the fourth.
All right. All right, that's it. Thank you.
All right, we want to-
Pretty good compared to your last one.
Set up a public hearing for this for next month? Anyone?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's October.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business, anything, anybody? Ron? Steve?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.